Right, work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues and formally with staff invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to discussion. There's definitely no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. First is the discussion of the formal agenda. We do have an amended agenda. In front of us, we're going to be removing item seventeen and adding item seventeen A. Seventeen is the Fair Board appointments. We will be having interviews coming up. And do you know when? May twenty eighth, we will have interviews for applicants for the Fair Board. And then item seventeen A is the Columbia Memorial Hospital Hazard Mitigation Contract.
Extension, right?
Um, no, it's actually the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program. So this is for the pre-construction work. Any questions on that? Those two changes, anything else that we want to review on the agenda this evening, talk about, discuss?
I just, I can tell I'm a nerd still. I embrace that part. But, but to see the way these policies are so clearly written and how empowering they are. To get people to say yes, that we can do things. And when they can't, to make it clear by and, and to limit the negative, to emphasize, I just find it very uplifting.
Yep. No, staff did a fantastic job and appreciate the way things are laid out for us. Any other comments, questions? I see Commissioner Webb is joining us virtually. Commissioner Webb? Okay, and yeah, the Commissioner Thompson was also referring to the rolling agenda. We have any questions on anything going out to June eleventh?
If I can, I just want to remind the board as well as these emails also being going out to the Budget Committee. So you all should be receiving your documents tonight. The April thirtieth is a virtual daytime meeting. May seventh is a virtual daytime meeting. And then May fourteenth is in person, but people can participate virtually since it is hybrid. And the May fourteenth, usually your work sessions begin at five P M., but that day it will begin at four P M. All the other meetings will start at the regular ten thirty work session time.
Right. Yeah, very good. Anything else? Questions, comments? All right, we'll move on to our first topic. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two, Clear and Objective Standards for Housing. On page four of our agenda, Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director. Gail?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, thank you for entertaining this topic this evening. This is legislation that's being proposed that's come out of Senate Bill or House Bill thirty-one ninety-seven back in twenty twenty-three. And it requires the county to adopt by July thirty-fourth Clear and Objective Standards for Housing. And so we started this project back in December of twenty twenty-three. We held four work sessions with your board. Three in our last year and one back in February this month. When we came for the first reading back in March, Commissioner Webb especially, I know had a lot of questions about this particular ordinance. So we scheduled it through a work session today, which will be followed by the first reading if your board decides to do that later this evening. Uh, what we've done throughout the entire almost year and a half process is we have taken the expanded our mission, so to speak, and looked through everything in the code that might possibly touch housing. So not just the zoning districts themselves, but everything that could possibly impact how houses get constructed. And so we've done a significant amount of rewriting. Uh, we had submitted it in February to Department of Land Conservation and Development. They sent back comments between March twenty-fourth and March twenty-sixth of this year, right before your first reading. And so we've incorporated all those comments to the best of our ability. Those have been taken in and really I'm just here tonight to answer any questions you might have about the process or why we're doing those or what specifically we may have done.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Gail. We have any questions?
We have it. I'm curious what the Planning Commission's thoughts were in regards to the process. Um, did they have any red flags? Were there any concerns?
Yeah, so we worked with the Planning Commission for through three drafts on this. And so there were concerns that always came out, especially during the first draft when we were re-writing a lot of things. And so questions about, well, why do we require applicant neighborhood meetings for specific things but not others? Or, you know, are there, sometimes there were suggestions about how we can make something clearer. Um, overall, the feedback we got during the public's hearing on the third draft, which was held in March, I believe, of this year, uh, was that, um, they, they felt the process had been good. They recommended your board approve it as presented. And felt that this was a good step forward for the
Because I know that our purpose was to just try to streamline and simplify and, and promote housing. And so you know, as best as we can as a government, a small government, I feel that you know, whatever came out of that process with our, our planning commissions inside, because I know we have two builders um, on the commission, uh, both of them, I think, are specifically housing. And so I, I really lean personally on their end side of whether or not this assists or hinders the process. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wonder. Dolphins and burritos?
That will be a separate subject.
Well, because you know what? Reading this word for word was, um, was relatively easy, was relatively straightforward. I really appreciate the work of staff and the Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Planning Commission and everybody who had some kind of input in this. There were just a few couple dozen little issues that, that we've discussed. But it's a pretty piece of stuff. I just want to know about dolphins and burritos.
So just for clarification, that is specifically with regard to the updates in Goal sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. So that's not tied to the Clear and Objective Standards for Housing. So we will be talking about that after this.
I know, I thought I might.
I just didn't want anybody to start wondering why we didn't have anything about dolphins in the twenty-five oh two.
Clear and objective standards really makes sense because, um, having, having been part of neighborhood planning organizations, it, it can often turn into something that's very personal and subjective and constrictive. So I appreciated what you did to make this clear as well. I mean, I was joking about the sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, but the Clear and Objective, I mean, the whole tenor of land use planning is turning to be supportive, getting to yes, and empowering people to do the right thing while having constraints on not doing the wrong thing. So I appreciate all of that work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Do we have? Commissioner Webb still?
She could be on camera.
Okay.
For the coffee.
Any, uh, any other comments on this? Questions? Okay. Good, good work.
Thank you.
Next, Comprehensive Plan Update Goals sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. This is on page six and we have David Payne. Welcome.
I know. Well, no, because it takes something to produce a document that's like this.
Yeah.
Really great.
Yeah, took a little bit of typing, sure. Um, good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Cook, Senior Planner, County Community Development. Um, I should be joined virtually by Garrett Phillips of the Columbia River Estuary Study Passageway. But either way, we'll move on, yes, so. Okay, thank you.
He was in that meeting earlier.
Okay, good. Well, so last week, you may remember, we presented our draft policies for the Comprehensive Plan Update to Goal sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. We heard from your board the importance of using good language for draft policies, which are not a state of federal mandate. In our next draft, we're going to make those language changes to the policies with the exception of two topic areas that we wanted to identify with your board tonight. Um, before that, I wanted briefly mention that staff received public comments on our agenda this evening from Scott McMullin at the Oregon Fisherman's Cable Committee Incorporated. Uh, we've arranged to speak with Mr. McMullin tomorrow so that we can incorporate his concerns into our next draft. His comments were all really related to cable landing policies found on pages one oh nine to one eleven of your agenda. Okay.
I'm glad you're doing that. I know that that's, I mean, he's been very active in, in this for decades, so glad that we're giving him the time and listening to his concerns.
So that kind of segues into our next section, section of new policies in Goal eighteen, which is on cable landings. Um, cable landings, all of these policies are newly crafted. There's no state mandate. There's no federal mandate which requires us to enforce these policies. Um, but it's our opinion that some policies do need to be mandated in order for the county to have a seat at the table for potential future cable landing projects. We need some policies with shall language in order to have an enforceable policy. Certain federal actions within the county require consistency with the county's enforceable policies. So if we have no enforceable policies, we don't have a voice such a project were proposed in the future. We want to be able to influence the development of such a project in a way that suits our unique area. So cable landings, for example, without enforceable policies in a very dystopian, unlikely worst-case scenario of future, you know, a federal agency could decide to build dozens of cable landings along our coastline with no enforceable policies. We don't have any legal argument to contest. That's really the only section of, of policies where we would, it, which is not a state or federal mandate, which we are recommending shall language for those policies. Uh, we have some kind of language policies proposed in the dredging and dredge material disposal sections of Goal sixteen and seventeen for many of the same reasons about enforceable policies. Our existing section on dredging and dredge material disposal already uses shall language for most of the policies, which is why we've been allowed to enforce our local policies, uh, with the Army Corps and their recent dredging projects. Um, we received some comments earlier today from Commissioner Thompson. Um, so thank you for communicating those to Gail and to me. Um, we'll rope those comments into our final draft. And if any commissioner has a question about our draft policies or would like to make a recommendation, please let me in.
Yeah, Commissioner.
The email that we received earlier today, I felt was, um, very descriptive. So I appreciate that you guys were going to take some time with him, um, to discuss his concerns. Um, because I have a feeling that this, I would have similar concerns. I don't want to limit. Um, but I also agree that, you know, if you don't have policies, then, then you turn into, you know, the, the pincushion, lots of pins sticking out. And so, um, I appreciate that. I, I do want to circle back to making sure that along with, um, shall policies or any of the policies written, just identifying which one is a federal, which one is a state, so that there's a more robust conversation because um, it is, it, for me, it's just tell me why. I want to know now. Um, I get that the policy is there. I get you've had a robust, um, communication with, with, with the stakeholder group. But I wasn't part of the stakeholder, like I wasn't participating in the stakeholder group, so I didn't hear the reasoning through the why. And so any additional policies or any shall language, um, I would really like it to have a description as to why. Not just citing, um, not just citing, well, because it was there prior. Because for me, that's not enough of a reason. Um, we've seen a lot of issues at the state level because something was there prior led to issues that we're dealing now. And I think we could all sort back to measure one ten. Um, that's a prior, but we had to sort that issue out. And so I'm, I'm looking for, like, are there unintended consequences down, you know, a decade down the line for us? Um, which you've identified one with the, if we don't have a policy, that could be an unintended consequence. And so, like, I fully support that mentality. I just want more of, like, tell me why. Um, because on the front side, yeah, it looks great, but what led to this needing to be here? Or what led to that shall language, um, wasn't it, wasn't the situation that created it or caused it? So that, that's what I really want to make sure of, is that we're not just inputting language to make us feel good. Um, that we're inputting language that has value and a reason behind it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Webb has. Commissioner Webb?
I'm sorry, but, um, I'm really not feeling well and, and I don't think I can make it through this meeting. Uh, will we still, I, 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 even if, I, I, I mean, we'll still have a quorum, right? Uh, I'm sorry.
We actually won't. Um, during a regular meeting, we will not have a forum on one of the items, which is the
Hospital.
Hospital. I will have to not participate in that one because I work at the hospital.
Is it possible to open and do the meeting and just that agenda item then close?
I am sorry, but, um, I'm sort of at the point that, uh, listening to Commissioner Bang's lack of support for zone in general. Um, I just, um, I, I'm, uh, I, I'm so, I, I can't do it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Um, good night.
Well, um, what can we do here?
Yeah, so even though you're declaring natural conflict of interest, there is an exclusion, no or ask. That allows me to vote if your board is required to make the full form. Um, you still not participate in the discussion, maybe you still need to vote.
Okay, so I can, uh, open that, that item, declare my conflict, not participate.
But still make the vote.
But still vote?
Yes. It, 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 the exception comes if you don't have a full form without your vote.
Question, what is the timeframe of the need for this? So Justin unfortunately is not able to be here tonight, but, um, you know, it is just given the circumstances of everything with the, with the federal funding, um, we are wanting to get it signed sooner rather than later, um, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to do this until the um, May fourteenth agenda.
Can we call an emergency meeting, um, at the next work session?
Yeah, thi- this is really, yeah, I know that I mean, from my standpoint, I know that I've been following this very carefully and closely, that, you know, time is of the essence to get this executed.
It's legal. So, yeah, what, like, I, I guess what is the potential unintended consequence to our chair?
So, let me just read the audience. So we're at three four four, that's your, you know, fifteen zero. And it talks about, I mean, the first part of the that you can't participate or vote. And then it says, if any public official's vote is necessary to meet our requirement, new number of votes be taken, contain official actions, that they're able to vote, but not participate as a public official in any discussion. So it's, it's pretty clear. Okay.
Okay, fine. Well, thank you, County Council. That's what we do. Um, and I'm sorry the Commissioner Webb, uh, had to excuse herself from meeting. If she's sick, I understand that, that she's not feeling well. If it's because she doesn't want to have discussion and debate, I don't understand that. Um, yes, this is strange, um, because I know that she's missed a lot of meetings. I know that she's been ill. Um, but we've got to be able to have discussion and differing viewpoints um, during work sessions, regular meetings, you, you name it. Um, so I, I don't know what her motivation was that she had to leave, but um, this is not the way that we can continue as a board of commissioners. We need to be able to have these discussions. We need to be able to, uh, take action on items. Now we're hamstrung trying to work around a forum because, you know, Commissioner Webb doesn't want to participate, so I hope, I hope that if she is sick, that she, you know, is able to get, uh, to urgent care or to uh, get some assistance, but this is frustrating.
You bet, but we do have, we do have a quorum. We have legal standing.
Yeah.
It's not, there's a reason it's in the law. So can I go back to the other discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I want to know about dolphins and burritos. Well, because, as I said, I went through every single page, every single word and Kai goes and, you know, I E's and E G's and, uh, you know, just a few little nitpicky grammar things from somebody who's been reading these for a long time, but dolphins and burritos are serious.
So it's, it's clear we need to expand our definition section, uh, yes, but yet the dolphins are groups of pilings in a water, in, in the water. That's just the name that was given to them for whatever purpose, with dolphins, so a group of pilots stuck in the, in the river. Um, and then a, a burrito is a type of erosion control measure, yeah, it's like wrapping cloth or some kind of plastic, maybe filled with sand, maybe filled with some other type of material that we use to stabilize it.
Well, there's no way Laban would understand that. But, but, you know, this, this really makes a lot of sense. Uh, it makes sense to me that we have enforceable language because Thursday, there's a meeting with the Department of Land Conservation and Development in C CUP to talk about offshore energy. So this is an emergent issue. It may be that, given the problems with the supply chain and the other kinds of, um, I want to say chaos is the word that comes to mind about all kinds of federal issues that it won't become an issue for a while. If it does and when it does, because we are moving in a direction of climate energy, we'll be ready to deal with it in a way that, uh, we aren't now. So correct, good for that. And, and I don't feel the need to have the explanation. I know that you would like it. I trust, as you say, it was in there, that it's been better adequately and I am conscious of the workload and the need to go forward. So what's in there makes sense to me and I don't need to have that level of explanation and oversight over these changes because they are, they seem clear and logical and reasonable in every way. So I think you and I are a different place on that.
Would it be, um, something, would it be agreeable to have, if it's not a state or federal mandate, be able to identify those that we're adding shall language to? I mean, I think that would be absolutely something that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, give me the explanation.
I mean, I think if we're doing something on our own, it's a good idea to know what that is, so, yeah. I want to acknowledge Scott McMullin, uh, with the Board of Fisherman's Cable Committee. I understand, I mean, all saw your work today. I understand you're going to be having a presentation tomorrow, so um, appreciate all that you do and appreciate the staff, uh, and we get together and talk with you some of your concerns, uh, with the goal, uh, with the goal of policy changes.
And helping us balance economic vitality with neighborhood livability and
Absolutely.
Good landings.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on, yes, Commissioner Bangs?
Just thank you for, uh, summarizing what I said by just simply saying anything that is not a state or federal, you know, guideline to tell me why. All I want is, is give me a reason.
Yeah, we'll make sure at the first reading, uh, of the, the ordinances that adopt these will have an explanation or described after you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Plan Update Goals sixteen, seventeen, eighteen?
Oh, um, prior to first reading, um, and I know you said that what we have today, what I read through today did not have all of the shals changed, um, but it will be changed, um. If somebody would just, like, give me a heads up, like, I assume that that'll be the next document that we see, would be all of those changes. Correct?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, well, so the, the next document we'll be drafting is, is taking all of our stakeholder comments, all of the planning commission comments and all of your board's comments and addressing them all in the fashion that they're addressed in the text. We will be taking this to the Planning Commission for a formal recommendation. And then if the Planning Commission at that time has any recommended, recommended changes, we'll make those and then that's what you'll say.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Appreciate all your hard work on this and, and continued hard work. So we'll be coming back July, is that right?
July twenty-fifth, June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth. Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. We don't have any other items on our work session, so we'll be able to take a good, healthy thirty-five minute break.
We have an executive.
Oh. Oh, okay. Well, sorry. I was, I was getting so excited to take a little
Yeah.
Yeah, lunch break. Okay, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners will now meet in the executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to O R S nine one nine two point six six zero subset two subset H. To consult with County Council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the public are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations under the executive session except the stated mental subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, the Board of Commissioners will convene into open session. Okay.
Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body so acts, and as the Clatsop County Local Contract Review Board is now meeting in regular session, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I want to welcome everybody here this evening. Clerk of the Board, can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Quila.
Here.
Vice Chair Bangs.
Here.
Commissioner Wakua.
Commissioner Wakua is excused.
Commissioner Webb.
And Commissioner Webb, um, is ill.
And Commissioner Thompson, I'm here.
Thank you, Clerk of the Board. First item is the agenda approval, and we do have an amended agenda. So we're going to be removing item seventeen, which is the apparent appointment to the Fair Board till a future meeting. And I think that future meeting is next month, May twenty-fifth, where we will have interviews of candidates. May twenty-fifth?
Eight.
Twenty-eight. May twenty, okay. May twenty-eighth, and we will have interviews of the Fair Board candidates at that time. And then we'll be adding business item seventeen A, which is the Columbia Memorial Hospital Mitigation Assistance Grant. So, can we have a motion and include those amendments, please?
Um, I move to approve the amended, uh, agenda, removing item seventeen, the Fair Board, and adding item seventeen A, Columbia Memorial Hospital Mitigation Assistance Grant.
Second to motion.
Moved and seconded to, um, approve the amended agenda, removing item seventeen, appointment to the Fair Board until a future meeting, and adding business item seventeen A, Columbia Memorial Hospital Mitigation Assistance Grant. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. First item is the proclamation, Child Care Provider Appreciation Day. Perfect timing. Eva Manderson, Director of Northwest Regional Child Care Resource and Referral. Step right into it.
Justin said.
You could catch your breath.
There are all these kind of a mess. Lots of traffic.
I know, it's busy out there. Beautiful day.
Busy, busy.
And maybe, uh, if you wanted to both introduce yourselves as well?
I'm Virginia Atwood. I am a quality improvement specialist here in Clatsop County.
And I'm Dan Gaffney. I volunteer with the Clatsop Childcare Program.
Yeah, welcome to all of you. And Eva, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm Eva Manderson. I know everybody here, I think. Um, I'm the Director for Child Care Resource and Referral. Our agency supports childcare programs in Clatsop, Columbia, and Tillamook Counties. Um, we provide training and coaching and technical assistance and, um, do a lot of recruiting and then hoping to retain as many programs as we can. So, thank you for having me um, and Dan and Virginia here with me tonight. Um, I'm here again. Uh, I think this may be our third or fourth year in a row where, um, we're requesting the county to proclaim May ninth, Provider Appreciation Day. Um, this is a national event that's recognized always the Friday before Mother's Day. Um, and, um, just wanting to recognize all of the programs that are here in the county. Um, you have about forty programs that are licensed or recorded programs and then an unnumbered um, amount of programs that are exempt that are doing informal care. Um, so just a that are exempt that are doing informal care. Um, so just a vast number of people that make up that network that provide care to families so that families can work and go to school and all the things that they need to do in their daily lives. Um, I also want to invite all of you, any of you who want to join us on May seventeenth, which is the day that we are actually celebrating Provider Appreciation Day. To our Provider Appreciation Day um, event, we're providing lots of good food and training and um, our early learning hub is setting up a bookstore for our providers to use vouchers and go shopping for books um, for their program. And so it'll be a fun event. Um, not on Mother's Day weekend. We figure our providers would like to spend Mother's Day weekend in other ways. And so it's just the Saturday after that. Yeah.
Where?
At Gray School. I think we start at nine o'clock.
Have a flyer. I can leave with you. Maybe I lost one.
Well, thank you. And and to all three of you, thank you for your work with the Childcare Expansion and Retention Program. That's some good work that started under COVID and continues to this day. And all three of you have had a a big part in that. So thank you very much. And Dan and Virginia, would you guys like to say anything?
I would. And I I I couldn't decide which of my ties. As an elementary principal, I used to have a number of ties and I had a story with each one.
Yeah.
This one represents all the different kinds of kids we represent.
Yeah.
That we serve with this childcare program. And this one represents the creativity that comes out of our childcare programs. Uh, it just, it's it's amazing to see what kids come out of these programs with. And I, I want to thank you on behalf of all those kids, those families, and those businesses that continue to work because they have employees, they have childcare. Thank you for your initial and your continued support. Since 2022, Clatsop Child Care Program has awarded roughly $700,000 to local childcare providers. We expect to be able to award up to a million by the end of this year. Uh, struggles continue despite the efforts of you and the program. Uh, but we have seen Clatsop County no longer considered a childcare desert when it comes to preschoolers. Infants and toddlers, we're still a desert. We still don't have enough service there. Despite the business support provided along with the grant funds, we still have providers who struggle. We will continue to seek funding and other support for childcare providers and parents while advocating for state and federal funding to support all families who can, so that they can afford quality childcare. So thank you for your continued support, past, present, and future.
Thank you, Dan. Virginia, where?
Yeah, um, I so I started out on this advisory board, um, kind of as a volunteer position when I was working in a center as the director. So I can't kind of came on as that, giving that perspective. It's from like the provider's point of view, um, which eventually led in me getting this wonderful job with the Childcare Resource and Referral. So um, kind of full circle, in my opinion. So yeah, thank you.
Well, thanks again for all your efforts. It's good to be able to say that with this money, we've actually made progress and, you know, taken strides with preschoolers and 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 done really good work with the funds. Uh, you know, Commissioner Bangs would like to say something. Give it to Bangs.
I want to say thank you to you guys. Um, 2021 was a interesting year, I think, for all of us. And um, we regularly met and you guys tolerated my, my baby commissioner. I was a baby new newly mentored, whatever you want to call me. And I had so many ideas and ideals and and clip art, you know, little posters of of hopes and dreams. And it was often kind of with a little bit of ADHD. Um, but what our group created is helping. And I think that all of us, when we started, said we just wanted to help and and make it better. And it is making it better. Um, and yes, it does come with all of the learning curves that I think our advisory board has has been witness to. Um, but we're still helping. And I think we dedicated, what was it? Uh, how many ARPA dollars was it?
I want to say it was uh, three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred thousand. And so we're at seven hundred thousand. So that tells me that more than fifty percent of that funding came from other sources, not just the county. And that tells me that so many more people and so many more agencies and entities are invested into to the success process. And so I'm just grateful. Thank you, you guys. Because, you know, you took my ADHD and your experience and your experience and your experience and and my dreams and all of our dreams. And it turned into, I think, something really beautiful. And I continually talk about, you know, COVID being an absolute difficult time. But what came out of it was those ARPA dollars and all of the things that we could accomplish with them. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. We do appreciate your hard work on on the advisory committee. Commissioner Thompson, do you have anything you want to mention?
I actually do. Um, so Eva, we've known each other such a long time.
Very long time. Back in the Ford Family Foundation days.
Ford Family Foundation, a couple of trainings down in Tillamook County. I don't know you, Virginia, but so Dan Gaffney and I are going to be working together uh, this week and next for uh, an OCF Scholarship Fund for high school seniors and um, new college students. There's a Clatsop County Scholarship Fund. And so Dan covers the whole range of development.
But I'm retiring.
Again, again.
I remember when you and I were starting this and getting it rolling. And there was a time that was pretty rough, but by golly, you stuck with it. And I'm always grateful to you for that because you are a shining star and uh, really the, you're the fiber optic in the middle that carries it. You know what I mean? Um, everybody else contributes. Everybody else's work matters. But Dan, you're just, you've been critical. I want to acknowledge you now and always. Retired except when it's for the kids.
Oh, that's great. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Um, are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve resolution and order proclaiming May ninth, 2025 as Provider Appreciation Day and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second to motion.
Moved and seconded to approve resolution and order proclaiming May ninth, 2025 as Provider Appreciation Day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming May ninth, 2025 to be Childcare Provider Appreciation Day, whereas childcare supports children's growth, development, and educational advancement and creates a positive economic impact for families and communities. And whereas childcare programs are essential to the health of our communities by fostering welcoming spaces, supporting working families, and creating positive enriching environments where children can develop lifelong skills. And whereas Clatsop County and the state of Oregon recognizes that childcare has been a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy, and as such, has provided much needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare by creating the Clatsop County Childcare Expansion and Retention Grant Program. Increasing investments in agencies that support the recruitment and retention of high-quality childcare options for families and improving access to programs that support young families. Whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May ninth, 2025 as Childcare Provider Appreciation Day in Clatsop County and invites all community members to join in this observance of Provider Appreciation Day by recognizing childcare providers for their important work dated this twenty-third day of April, 2025, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Eva, Dan, Virginia. Thank you so much uh, for being here this evening and thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is where we stand up and cheer.
Woo, woo.
All right. Next is a proclamation for Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. And Jane Foreman, School Counselor at Seaside Middle and High School. Welcome, Jane.
Thank you. And shout out to the childcare workers with a almost two-year-old who is in childcare in Clatsop County. I am very grateful for you guys. All right. So as a local school counselor and parent, come here today to emphasize the significance of children's mental health and to highlight the value of informing our community on this issue. National Children's Mental Health Awareness Week seeks to raise awareness about the importance of children's mental health and show that positive mental health is essential to a child's healthy development. Many of our children and youth are facing challenges such as anxiety, depression, and trauma. And unfortunately, a significant number of them feel as though they're navigating these tough times alone. So this is where we, as a community, can make a difference. Dedicating awareness to children's mental health encourages collaboration amongst local organizations, mental health professionals, and families, helping to create a supportive environment where children feel safe to express their feelings and seek the assistance they deserve. So I encourage us to come together to ensure that every child knows they're not alone and there's a community ready to support them.
Well, thank you so very much.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I always, when this topic comes up, I always have something to share. Um, my daughter continually reminds me that Oregon um, is ranked one of the lowest states for access to resources comparative to need. And so things like this are continually so very important so that we can raise awareness. But not only that, it raises awareness for hopefully at the state level um, and national level so that our kids can get more resources. Um, and I appreciate you coming and doing this. And oh, on a side note, there is a Senate bill up for four-H extension to create a consortium of sorts uh, in regards to helping promote uh, mental health care. And so just putting that in there for anybody who's interested in in taking a look at it. Because hopefully, like anything at this point, anything could help. So but thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Bangs. I know how passionate you are about this issue and your family uh, is very passionate about this as well. I think all of us that have young children are. So I really appreciate uh, your uh, introducing the proclamation and do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution and order proclaiming May fourth through tenth, 2025 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Second to motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming May fourth through the tenth, 2025 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming May fourth through tenth, 2025 to be Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of Clatsop County. And whereas mental health, also known as emotional or behavioral health, is a vital, is a vital part of every child's medical health and development. It affects how individuals think, feel, and act. All children and teens have periods of anger, frustration, and sadness. For some kids, these feelings can reach a tipping point and interfere with everyday life. And whereas free, accessible, and inclusive help child and youth, mental health services are available to help create healthy, thriving, and connected communities that support personal growth and well-being. And whereas providing early intervention and treatment for child and youth mental health is essential. All children, youth, and their families in need of mental health supports must have access to services when and where they need them. And whereas mental health challenges in children, adolescents, and young adults are real, and but most importantly, they are treatable and often preventable. And whereas it is important that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May fourth through the tenth, 2025 as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in Clatsop County and invites all community members to join in this observance of Children's Mental Health Awareness Week by recognizing the value of our children's well-being dated this twenty-third day of April, 2025, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much, Jane.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here this evening. Next is Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day proclamation. And our presenter is Tao Vu, President of Vietnamese Community Oregon, Vice President of Legislation Supervisory Council, Federation of Vietnamese-American Communities of the USA.
I believe he's on the line.
Tao? Is he?
Um, I asked him to unmute. Tao, if you press star six on your phone?
Yeah.
Oh, we can hear you. Welcome. Tao, would you like to introduce the proclamation?
Try the star six again, Tao.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tao Vu. I am President of the Vietnamese Community of Oregon, and I'm also Vice President of the Legislature Supervisory Council of the Federation of Vietnamese-American Communities in the USA. I'm so glad that I joined the meeting with you on the phone today in order to receive the proclamation in recognition of the fifty Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tao. Any questions, comments? Are we?
No, I don't. I don't have any questions at all. Again, thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. Because this year is very special, we will observe the fifty anniversary of the Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day in Oregon that will be held in the city of Portland, Oregon.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate you being here. Thank you for introducing the proclamation. Are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve the resolution and order proclaiming April thirtieth, 2025 to be Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day and authorize the chair to read and then sign the proclamation.
Oh, second to motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution and order proclaiming April thirtieth, 2025 to be Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day and authorize the chair to read then sign the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. In the matter of proclaiming April thirtieth, 2025 to be Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day, whereas Vietnamese refugees have proudly resided in the county of Clatsop, the state of Oregon, since the conclusion of the Vietnam War on April thirtieth, nineteen seventy-five. And whereas Vietnamese-Americans have put forth their full toiling energy building the county of Clatsop, the state of Oregon, in in a multitude of prominent areas including industry, economy, culture, education, and military service. And whereas Vietnamese-Americans have counted on the state of Oregon as being their second heart, mind, and family homeland. And whereas every year, Vietnamese-Americans celebrate Remembrance Day on April thirtieth to solemnly honor the fifty-eight thousand American soldiers that included eight hundred and ten servicemen and servicewomen from the state of Oregon and more than three hundred thousand South Vietnamese soldiers who sacrificed their lives in the line of duty for freedom and democracy in South Vietnam from November nineteen fifty-five to April nineteen seventy-five. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April thirtieth, 2025 does hereby proclaim April 30th, 2025, as Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day in Clatsop County, and we resolutely encourage all to join in the reverent recognition of this cultural heritage celebration, dated this 23rd day of April, 2025, Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Tao Uh, thank you so much for presenting this. And yeah, it's hard to believe, 50 years ago, this is the 50th anniversary this year. Thank you for being there to present.
Thank you so much for signing and approving the proclamation of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnamese-American Remembrance Day.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and your effort to make it happen.
Thank you Tao. We'll move now to the business from the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, except for public hearings, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. Quick of the board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there are not.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move in to in-person testimony. Do we have anyone that is here to speak in person? Okay. Not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close business from the public and move on to the consent calendar. We have quite a few items on the consent calendar this evening. Do we have any questions about any of them, comments, or are we ready for a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar. I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is commissioner reports, and we'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Well, thank you. It's a busy time. I mentioned that Dan Gaffney and I will be working on the OCF Scholarship Fund for Clatsop County. Before that, it's the Seismic Rehabilitation Grant Advisory Committee. You'll remember, there was a project at Napa School, there's been projects in Cannon Beach and Seaside. This is a way to do seismic retrofitting on public safety buildings and school buildings in Oregon. The proceeds come from the sale of bonds. It's in the state constitution. They absolutely have to go for that because it's critically important. It's run out of business Oregon. What the committee does is listen to the recommendations, the considered opinions of a team of very good geologists and scientists who evaluate and rank, quantify with data, make formulae, and all those kinds of long spreadsheets that help guide us through the process. But there's also a way that we talk about it from the point of view of representatives from all over the state. I'm the delegate from the Association of Oregon Counties, and it brings millions of dollars into our county, so it's an important thing to do. That's Thursday, there's a couple of things on Thursday, then in the evening on Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:30, there's a meeting in Seaside at the Bob Chisholm Community Center to talk about offshore wind. There are competing priorities in land use planning. We need to have clean energy if we're to address some of the climate change issues more successfully. On the other hand, the sacrifice of some other kinds of activities, farmland, forestland, it's complicated. So anybody who cares about this topic is welcome to come to the Chisholm Community Center. I'll be there. Saturday, Saturday is an all-day training on wilderness survival in Cannon Beach, because some of us, I don't think we're catastrophic fantasists, but we do want to be prepared and help our neighbors be prepared. So, we're going to be at Tolivana Hall and then out in the woods. They told us to bring knives because we were going to be doing whittling. I have never whittled in my life, but I'll be bringing you a report on that. Next week again is the Hodel Scholarship Fund. What else is going? I got, I decided to make a list. We've got Goal Five for the Land Conservation and Development Commission. I'm our coastal representative there, and we're going to talk about cultural landscapes and cultural artifacts and how to protect them. We have to reopen the rules because it was more complicated than we were able to encompass going forward. What we have is international relations. So that means the nine federally recognized tribes plus other native groups want to have a voice in the preservation or the restoration of their culture and their life. But we also have to integrate that with modern Western culture that is more economically-minded. It's very complicated because we just had a proclamation about Vietnamese people considering Oregon their second home. Well, for indigenous people, they're first and we're their second home. So how do we, how do we integrate this respectfully? I was reading the Oregonian this morning, and there's a conflict at Willamette Falls among the tribes. So there isn't any kind of uniform way to approach every tribe because they're all distinct nations. It gets very complicated. We went with LCDC a couple of weeks ago to the Warm Springs Reservation to listen to their tribal council interact with us. I've been following up, not as an LCDC commissioner, although they were grateful that we came, they appreciated our presence there, but talking to commissioners at the Association of Oregon Counties about reaching out to tribal nations that are within their county boundaries to help encourage that person-to-person interaction, which is necessary before we can do really effective legal work. We have to have a sound relationship. So all of that's going on. I decided to pile up all my stuff. I went today to the Housing Group, which was glorious for me because it's a bunch of stuff I've been working on for a long time, and to be with other people who are working on it at the Bob Chisholm Center in Seaside, again, including the new project in Warrington, which is a game changer, which is a game changer. But you know, they're making modular housing to save on costs. They're making it with steel because timber isn't cost-effective. Another one bites the dust, right? There goes that dream. But, there's that. I'm going to be joining the Human Services Advisory Council and hopefully, developments at the state level and what's going on with human services. As part of some other kinds of informal liaisons, I do, there's a county advisory group for looking at alternative energy and a Yakima County Commissioner from Washington, Benton County Commissioner, Lynn County Commissioner, Mora County Commissioner, Yumatilla County Commissioner, Lake County Commissioner, Grant County Commissioner, Coquitet County Commissioner. And then, from Anubel Northwest, because we're looking at how do we use best practices on both sides of the river to talk about resolving the differences so that we can have better energy and still obey laws and be economically feasible because it's that three-pronged tension. I go to the Association of Oregon Counties, I'm one of 10 county commissioners around the state who are co-chairs. There are five policy committees and two co-chairs for each one. Governance, Revenue, and Economic Development is the one I share with Commissioner Garrett from Columbia County. I'll be going to, I'll be going to the AOC Board of Directors Retreat. This is out of my pocket. This is the $320 registration, so I'll be going to that. I'll be riding with a friend and rooming with a friend. We'll see if the snoring does me in or not, because that may not be a good plan going forward. I also saw a copy of this Surf Pine Short-Term Rental Policy. So I think what we're seeing around the county in terms of short-term rentals is some kinds of movement to add structure to it. Because I know that we're going to be doing some things about short-term rentals, I know that there are some people who are thinking in terms of lawsuits. So what I'm looking to do is to interact with people in various roles and locations so that we can put in structures that balance the tensions and harmonize them so we avoid lawsuits. There was at the Bob Chisholm Community Center, I think I told you, a lovely watershed council meeting. One thing I wanted to bring there, Erin Groh, who's the fire, OSU Extension Fire Guy, passed out Reducing Wildfire Risk to Your Home and Property: A Homeowner Self-Assessment. The reason I'm bringing that tonight is when I looked up on OSU's website to find out where the local resource person was to come to our homes and tell us how to do it, there's nothing there. This is going to be a rural do-it-yourself thing. So, I'm going to, I'm going to add that to the meeting minutes and hope it goes out so that everybody can take a look and do your own assessment. There is ongoing training by the Cannon Beach Medical Reserve Corps and Disaster Animal Recovery Team. There's radio training that goes on with them. Cannon Beach Fire has put out its annual report. They've got a project that has, is writing, just at the bottom of the approved list for the seismic rehab grant. We'll see if it gets to stay there. As part of LCDC, we did a retreat, and we talked about our best team. And so, there was a lot of good information that came out of that. I think it would be useful for us to look at that and think about how we as a board could have more constructive relationships. When I went to Warm Springs, I got a flag. Wave a flag for a minute, y'all. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
Northwest and Senior Disability Services, we're in the middle of our budget cycle and budget meetings, so nothing of news to report other than more budget conversations. CFEDC has their leadership tour scheduled for May 20th. If you did not get an invite, please reach out to Lindsay Davis. But yes, I think they always put a wonderful tour on for our forestlands, so hopefully folks can go. And I'm almost positive that our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Wakuwa, has received his invite, so I'll need to circle back with him. We are in the middle of, I guess, ramping up on the fair board for our fair this summer. There have just been a few minor changes, one being that the animals won't leave the property until after the fair has closed this year versus last year where the animals left late afternoon. So, that was just, that was a minor change. And then, we are still, you know, we'll have our interviews for our newest fair board member, and we have a very robust list of folks, so please take a look at that. I know a couple of them personally, wonderful humans, so, and I think that they bring a lot to the table. And so, I'm hopeful that our fair board will weigh in and be able to give us a recommendation also, or at least have some of our fair board members show up for interviews. Other than that, just, oh, looking at my calendar, because everything is on my calendar. Yeah. Oh, Napa had their foundation dinner. Napa Scholarship Foundation had our dinner this last Saturday, earned a little over $90,000 for scholarships for our seniors and also grants for teachers. And so, our Napa Schools Foundation is 28 years old, and I wish we could mimic that type of foundation for every school district in our county, because what they offer our students is basically able to fill in gaps, that, you know, the state can't serve our rural community like we deserve to be served. And so, our foundation tries to come in and help support. And the local business owners are very strong and come with a great amount of support, and it's always nice. Betsy Johnson continues to show up. I think this is her 28th year, she said, where she's showed up for our community. And, like, I, I gotta give it to her, I'm so glad she keeps showing up for us, even though she's retired from her adventures in legislature. So, well, I wouldn't call her retired, never mind, she's still busy. She shows up everywhere. But anyhow, I just wanted to kind of celebrate that proud moment of earning $90,000, or actually more than, for our students that evening. So, other than that, that's nothing else to report.
Yeah, thank you Commissioner Banks. And you mentioned the fundraiser for Napa Schools. I know that the college foundation had their fundraiser.
Yep.
Involved in that too, isn't that something?
It turns up, like a good penny, not a bad penny.
She really is amazing, and I do appreciate that she continues to remain engaged in fundraising and of course, in so many endeavors throughout Clatsop County, Columbia County, Columbia County, you name it. Attended the coal pack meeting, and it was held in Seaside, so they did focus on a number of Clatsop County issues during the meeting. One of the things was we did hire Sarah Louie as the executive director. She was the interim as the new executive director. We talked a little bit about the TLT, the testimony, the unfortunate demise of HB 3556, but, I was glad to hear from Amanda, is Amanda here? I was glad to hear that there actually is another House Bill 3962, which might be able to carry forward some of our wishes for flexibility and transit lodging tax funding. So that's fantastic. I hope that we can see some progress there. We talked about the FEMA BIOP. We won't know if we have any injunctive relief until May 29th. Again, this was the floodplain protection lawsuit that we'll finally get in front of Judge Simon, US District Judge, on the 29th of May. And then, we do know there's some political channels that are being worked as well to see if there can be an intervention within FEMA itself to really divorce the floodplain insurance issues with the environmental issues. And then, we talked about the Warrington Levis, which is intertwined with the FEMA BIOP as well. And that has been an arduous process, but they are getting to the next stage where there will be a geotechnical study that will hopefully get them closer to getting accredited, which will change what that floodplain is inside of the levy area. That's all I have. Thanks. I'll go ahead and turn it over to our Assistant County Manager.
Thank you. I just have one item that I want to make note for all of you as well as for the public, and we will be getting this out through a press release as well as social media, but as you all know, we are undergoing courthouse construction for the single-point entrance. And so, if you haven't been into the basement of the courthouse, a lot has happened. And this next week, they're going to be doing some work on the outside in the parking lot area to work on drainage improvement. And so, that means that the current ADA entrance into the basement and the parking in that area is going to be closed off. We will have signage, and like I said, we will be putting this out, making sure that those different attorneys, law enforcement, medics, fire, everybody knows that we are going to be rerouting people to the east side. Typically, this is an entrance that isn't open to the public, but we're going to be routing people that way because the elevator will still be accessible, you just won't be able to get to it through the typical ADA entrance. So, that's all.
It'll be accessible.
It'll be accessible. Just have to kind of go around the building.
Okay, thank you for that update, Assistant County Manager. I did forget one thing. Representative Bonamichi will be in town Friday, so I gave an update on our FEMA BRIC funding at the last meeting and the change to the federal funding for the Columbia Memorial Hospital project and for the resiliency features within it. But Representative Bonamichi will be here to kind of... But Representative Bonamici will be here to kind of meet with Columbia Memorial Hospital and then also do a press conference afterwards. Obviously, you know, there's disappointment that the federal funding stream has gone away, but still an effort to try to get it reinstated if possible and try to find alternative funding sources. Because this is a project, it's a commitment to the community to build a resilient hospital, one that can survive a natural disaster and be there for people to evacuate to in the case of a natural disaster. So that will be, that will be this Friday, I think 12:30 that she will be in town. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the business agenda. We'll start with the Short Term Rental Application Fee Increase, page 163. Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome, Gail.
Good evening, Commissioners. Staff is here tonight to request an increase to the application fee for a short-term rental permit. Currently, the applications are good for two years and the fee currently is $550. Starting back in July of last year, we held three work sessions with your board to discuss this issue. We worked with various departments to look at the different costs. And we came back to your board initially on January 8th this year with a recommendation to increase the fee to $1,500 for a two-year permit. At that meeting, there were some questions. The items been continued till this evening. In the meantime, we have made changes operationally in how the permits are processed. And that has resulted in some cost savings that we have identified. So we are asking tonight that you approve an increase to $1,000 for a two-year permit and that would become effective May 1st. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Commissioner Banks?
And just a reminder, we were going to review the cost of permitting every-
Every two years?
Every two years. Okay, excellent. I like how that is responsive to what is going to be or possibly happening in our community economically and so on and so forth. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you. I know that our newest Commissioner had some concerns and questions and wanted to speak with you. My recollection is that he had the idea that there was a way to make the fee scalable depending on the size of the operation. Were you able to go forward with that or did his other circumstances make it so that that did not happen?
Yeah, so following the January 8th meeting, I posed some questions to Building Codes because they are the ones that conduct the life safety inspections for short-term rentals and asked them the questions that Commissioner Wakua had posed, which is whether or not, based on the number of bedrooms, was there a difference in inspection times that could possibly, you know, justify a sliding scale? And the response that I got back from Building Codes was that, no, it's not necessarily the number of bedrooms, it's the age overall of the structure. That the older the structure, the more likely it is to not pass on its first inspection, the more likely it's going to have to have changes made to windows and doors to facilitate egress requirements in case of an emergency. And so there really was not an economy of scale that you could attribute to number of bedrooms. When we met with your board at our work session earlier in April, we did let your board know that if you wanted to, we could certainly look at a sliding scale based on the age of the structure. And we did not get any direction from your board at that time to move forward with that. I did meet with Commissioner Wakua on March 13th. We went over the findings that are in your packet this evening. He didn't really have any questions about the sliding scale at that point and seemed, when we left the meeting, that he was, I'll use the word intent, but he was fine with the findings that staff had presented to him at that meeting.
Right, I just wanted to clarify for the record because we had paused our deliberations to give him time to have his questions answered. So it seems from what I hear that you have answered his questions and he has no objections to our going forward. I don't know if the Chair has heard any contrary to that.
Well, I haven't. Commissioner Banks, did you have something?
I was just going to recap because I know she had a prior engagement at her last work session that the consensus of, and you could probably agree with, the consensus of the Commissioners at that work session was that let's keep it as simple as possible because we are a rural community who is on a shoestring budget. And anything more than keeping it simple for the entirety of our county would just add an additional workload. But thank you again for everything that you do with your other hats that you wear for the state. And we missed you.
No, I appreciate it. I think you characterized the discussion correctly. It was about simplicity and trying to keep it manageable for our staff. And then I do appreciate going through, delineating all the expenses and getting, you know, a number that is actually a decrease of, you know, down to $1,000. I think that's very reasonable, given that with the amount of work that our staff does and the amount of work that goes into managing and code enforcement, you name it. So I think this is a very fair proposed fee schedule. Thank you, Gail. Please pass that along to your team too.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective May 1st, 2025, as presented. Second?
Moved and seconded that the board adopt the proposed fee schedule to be implemented effective May 1st, 2025, as presented. All those in favor, signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Next item is the Solid Waste Franchise Agreement, Waste Management of Oregon, page 201. I see we have Dave Huber. Hi, Dave.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Thanks for having us this evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, terrific.
Getting to the right page here.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Dave, for being here. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to County Council to begin with, Anthony Pope.
Thank you, Chair. Today for the board's consideration is approving a solid waste franchise agreement between the county and Waste Management of Oregon. To begin, as you welcomed Dave and Nick, I'd like to turn some time over to them to further introduce themselves and I think they had a few words they wanted to say.
Yep. Thank you, County Council. All right, Dave, we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for having us this evening. Our apologies that we weren't able to be there in person. But my name is Dave Huber. I am the Public Sector Manager for WM here throughout the Oregon, our Oregon area. And with me this evening, I have our Operations Manager, Nick Grease, who oversees the specific routes that run throughout the rural Cl辛 County area. So thanks for having us. I wanted to just, you know, kind of highlight our company just briefly and then kind of bring it down to the Cl辛 County area. WM is North America's leading provider of comprehensive environmental solutions with the largest disposal network and collection fleet in North America. We provide collection, recycling, and disposal services to millions of residential, commercial, industrial, and municipal customers throughout the United States. We are driven by our commitments to put people first and to achieve success with integrity as we enable sustainability progress for businesses and cities. Our company has set a bold sustainability vision for the future, one where material is repurposed, energy is renewable, and communities are thriving. With our best-in-class capabilities in recycling, organics, and renewable energy, we are poised to partner with customers to help them achieve their sustainability goals today and into the future. So WM, we have been servicing the Cl辛 County rural area for just over 25 years when we acquired the Nahalem Valley Garbage Company in Vernonia, Oregon. And not to date myself, but I was actually the driver back in the day when that acquisition happened, I believe it was in 1998. So I know the rural Cl辛 County area very well. And so this is certainly exciting for me, but as well as Nick, to have a franchise agreement for the area. As you probably are well aware, we provide weekly garbage collection and every other week, recycling for our residential customers. And then we also provide commercial and drop box services for that area in Cl辛 County. The trucks that service the rural parts of Cl辛 County also service the city of Vernonia and the surrounding areas, as well as the city of Scappus and that surrounding area. All, the pitresable waste from Cl辛 County is hauled either to our Forest Grove Transfer Station or to the St. Helens Transfer Station, depending on, you know, there's two days that we're out there. So one day it makes sense to haul it to the St. Helens facility. And then the stuff on the south side, very south side of the county, is hauled to the Forest Grove Facility. The recycling material is hauled to a recycling facility plant in Hillsborough. And so with that, I wanted to just pass it over to Nick. Nick wanted to just share and provide some updates on how the recycling services are going since we started that this past year.
Good evening, everybody. It was pretty neat to see, I was speaking with one of my drivers today that services the recycling route in the Fishhawk area and also along 26, 202, and 103. And when we first started the recycling program out there, the participation rates of the residents was approximately 50%. It's already gone up 30%, up to 80. And so it's just neat to see that quick of growth of the participants in that rural
Yeah, that's great. Great news.
Yeah, so with that, you know, we didn't want to get, or you know, that's, wanted to keep it short and brief, but certainly want to open it up to any questions that you may have. I do want to thank, you know, Anthony Pope for working with us throughout the franchise agreement itself and, you know, as our legal team reviewed it and made revisions. But we're certainly excited with the outcome and feel like we're going to be able to provide great services for the county in the years ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Nick. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Banks?
I don't really have a question. I have a thank you to offer to both of you and to our County Council, Pope, of working through this. I was a newly mentored Commissioner when I walked into County Manager's office and I said, I want recycling for everyone in the county access. And we've solidified one franchise agreement, and this is our second franchise agreement with South County area as its focus. And so I am grateful to both franchises for your efforts in order to bring recycling access to everyone in our county, inclusive of our rural constituents. And when I say that, I recognize the efforts of both agencies, yourselves and our previous franchise, to take the cost concerns and to take all of the concerns that was brought by the Commission and had you guys work really hard with our County Council to minimize the expense that this would place upon our constituents. And so I just think that this is a very exciting final step to offer recycling to everyone in our county. And I remember when I had to vote no because there was going to be a cost increase, not by you guys, but by our other franchise, and they worked an exuberant amount of effort to make sure that that didn't happen so that we could all move forward with excitement. And so I'm just grateful. Thank you. And I will pass it to Commissioner Thompson when she's ready to make the motion because this is for her area.
Thank you.
I was just going to say yes. We're going to just say yes. Any other comments?
Yeah, do you have any?
No, just let's get it done.
Really?
She's ready to go. We need this. I move the board approve the solid waste franchise agreement with Waste Management of Oregon and direct the County Manager to sign. Second?
Moved and seconded that the board approve the solid waste franchise agreement with Waste Management of Oregon and direct the County Manager to sign. All those in favor, signify with an aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Nick.
Oh, please.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate all your hard work on this. Thanks again.
You're certainly welcome.
Glad to hear it's going so well and there's a lot of participation. That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great news. So, yeah, we're really excited. So thank you. Thank you for having us, too.
Thank you. And thank you, County Council.
Yep, thank you. And the only complaints I heard were from those really frugal people who didn't want to have to pay that much because they'd figured out a way to do it, just absolutely, you know, pinching every penny. But, you know, they, they're signing on for the good of the whole. So I'm grateful to those neighbors for their generosity.
Yes, and we need to have that service. That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Next is the added agenda item, 17A, Columbia Memorial Hospital Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Agreement. And before we get started on this, I have to declare an actual conflict. I work at Columbia Memorial Hospital. I'm wearing the vest, so I can't really escape that. And I know we have an issue with a quorum this evening. So I wanted to turn it over to our County Council to outline the process here and how we'll go forward on this item.
Thank you, Chair Quayle. And it is a bit of a unique situation, so I appreciate you giving me the time to explain why it would be permissible for you to vote today. As the board is aware, hopefully from some of my ethics trainings, when you do have an actual conflict of interest, you do have to declare it. And normally you are unable to participate in the discussion or the debate and you're unable to also participate in the vote. But in the ORSs, there is an exception, as Chair Quayle mentioned about making sure we have enough votes to move the matter forward. And just to be very clear, I just want to actually read straight out of the ORSs. This is ORS 244.120 subsection B. And it says, if a public, and this, the first part of this ORS is, you know, outlining how the public official needs to declare and not participate, but then it gives this exception. If any public official's vote is necessary to meet a requirement of a minimum number of votes to take official action, they shall be eligible to vote but not participate as a public official in any discussion or debate or an issue out of which the actual conflict arises. And as the board's aware, there's only three Commissioners here tonight. And just to tie it in, the county charter requires that any vote by the board can only be moved forward if there's three affirmative votes. It doesn't matter if there's three Commissioners or five Commissioners. And so that sets that requirement of a minimum number of votes at being three. And to add to the situation, this is a time-sensitive matter, and I'll turn some time over to Monica to kind of explain why.
Thank you. So this is, as Chair Quayle mentioned, this is part of the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant that the county applied for on behalf of CMH Hospital for the work that's being done on the construction specific to the resiliency of the new hospital. This grant is for $322,149.99, and it's for the Phase 1 work that is currently underway. And so this funding is crucial for them to continue to move forward the project and also to make sure that they don't lose any funding by not having any contracts signed. Your next meeting that you could take action wouldn't be until May 14th. And so we want to make sure that we get this signed so this funding can get passed through as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, Assistant County Manager. So I can declare an actual conflict. I will not participate in the discussion. However, I can vote because we do not have a quorum.
That's correct.
Okay. So I will go ahead and turn it over to Vice Chair Banks.
Do we have any discussions? I just have a couple of things if I could. Well, Chair Quayle, I appreciate your being so meticulous about maintaining that ethical boundary. I really appreciate that. I appreciate that it is legal because the statute tells us if you need this for a quorum, you are legally not only entitled but obliged to do it. So we are doing what we are legally obliged to do and we are behaving ethically and legally. So I'm glad we have all that clear and on the record. I just had one other question because I'm a nervous Nellie sometimes about emergency preparedness stuff. If Columbia Memorial goes ahead and builds this tower, will the people who are able to access it during an emergency be constrained to only employees and patients or will it just be everybody?
I just want to make sure that Chair Quayle, that you're not responding at all or part of the discussion. Sorry. I just saw some nodding and stuff. I just want to be very careful.
Yeah, but that would be certain. I'm not asking for a discussion, but that is the concern that I had. I don't know if you know the answer to that, Assistant County Manager. And maybe it isn't relevant, but it just seems to me, no matter what, it makes sense for the county to serve- for the county to serve as the conduit, the pass-through agency. Because of course, we want to fortify and increase our capacity to save lives in every way possible. But I just wondered where the boundary was about who could access that and if anybody knows it, because I think that's important, too.
As far as who can access the grant process or who can access the hospital?
Who can access the emergency tower?
Oh, I do believe, and I would encourage you to talk to somebody specifically with the hospital. But, you know, this is for the hospital patients who are going to be there should an event happen. But it's my understanding that there is a radius around the hospital that those living in that immediate area would be able to evacuate to the higher level platform. But again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the hospital.
Yeah, it's something that's down the road. But I'm thinking a lot about emergency preparedness right now, especially since we're seeing so much, I would say, disintegration of FEMA. I think there will be more and more that's going to fall on us. So I looked at you because it's your employer, but I don't want to break your wall of silence. So as we proceed on this, I'm in favor of going forward and being the pass-through agency. But I also want us to think about how we are going to become more capable, more response-ready as a county and every place, every place along the coast. Thank you.
And maybe since we're talking about what pass-through funding, maybe Assistant County Manager can, you know, illustrate what pass-through funding means, that it's not the county's funding, we are just-
So we're just a conduit. And so for this particular grant program, the BRIC grant, government agencies are who can apply on behalf of an applicant. So that's what the county did on behalf of Columbia Memorial Hospital. And so these funds would pass through the county from the federal agency, and then we would pass them through to CMH. And there is a whole, you know, audit process of accounting and such. So.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Do I need to call for the motion then?
That would be, yeah.
Okay. So Commissioner Thompson?
Um, there was an edit. One added for designee.
Do I have a motion?
I love it when I have a script. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the county manager or the designee to execute the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Agreement, EMS-2022-BR-006-009 for Columbia Memorial Hospital. Did I read that right? Because I do have visual challenges sometime. For Columbia Memorial Hospital.
Can I second it? Okay, I second that. It has been moved and seconded to approve the county manager or designee to execute the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant Program Agreement, EMS 2022 BR 006-009 for Columbia Memorial Hospital. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Do we need a roll call, or is that enough?
I got it.
We're good. Okay.
Passing it back to-
Thank you very much. And thank you, County Council, for your guidance. And thank you, Vice Chair. Next, public hearing. Page 02, Clear and Objective Standards for Housing, page 242. Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director. This is the time set for a public hearing on ordinance 25-02, Clear and Objective Standards. County Council, may we have the first reading by title only?
This is ordinance number 25-02, in the matter of, and ordinance admitting articles 1 through 6 of the Clatsop County Land and Water Development and Use Code incorporate clear and objective standards for housing.
Thank you, County Council. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to Gail, our Community Development Director, for the first, or for the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening again, Commissioners. This is work that commenced with the adoption of House Bill 3197 by the Oregon Legislature in 2023. We have been working with the Planning Commission since December of 2023 to audit our entire zoning code, all six articles, to look for any development standards that are related to housing, and then to ensure that they are written in a clear and objective manner. We went through three drafts with our Planning Commission. On March 11th, the Planning Commission had a formal public hearing. They recommended that your board approve the amendments as adopted. Since that time, we have received comments from Department of Land Conservation and Development. Those have been incorporated into the draft that you have before you this evening. We are asking that you conduct the first public hearing and then continue the item to May 14th. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Any questions of staff? All right. We'll go ahead and, oh, well, geez, I, open the public hearing on ordinance 25-02. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest report?
No.
No.
Nope. All right, Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public signed up to speak remotely?
No, there are not.
Right. Ask if any member of the public would like to speak in person. Okay. We will go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 25-02. And we have a motion to continue the public hearing. Do we have that motion?
I move we continue the public hearing on this matter to our May 14th, 2025, meeting and conduct the second reading at that time.
Second that motion.
Moved and seconded, we continue the public hearing on this matter to our May 14th, 2025, meeting and conduct the second reading at that time. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail.
Could I just say one thing?
Yes.
It's incredible we have no public comment on this.
Oh, you have just jinxed us.
Do you know how many people will be here on April?
There's another opportunity.
Okay, so it isn't over until it's over.
Right.
Got it. And nobody's singing yet. I got it.
All right. That is all the business items and public hearings on our agenda. Do we have anything for the good of the order?
I'm just glad the sun is shining.
Okay. Sun is shining, and we're adjourned. Thank you.